Call to order the March 30th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And I'd like to start this meeting off by reading a statement. Today, our state government took an important step by coming together to find a way forward from HB2. On behalf of the entire Cary Town Council and 160,000 people who called Cary home, I want to thank them for putting North Carolina first and bridging what seemed to be at times a vast and insurmountable partisan divide. No compromise is ever perfect. But if we can focus on and learn from the success of actually finding a compromise in this case, I believe we have increased optimism of what we will be able to accomplish together in our shared future. Thank you for allowing me to read that statement. I'll recognize Councilmember Robinson for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Robinson.
Great, thank you so much. Well, it is my pleasure to be able to tell everybody that Cary is celebrating its official birthday on October 3rd. The town, April, excuse me, April 3rd. The town was incorporated in 1871. And as we were discussing just, I think, last night, when Cary was first incorporated, the General Assembly inadvertently put an extra E in the word Cary, so it read C-A-R-E-Y. And it took many years for that confusion to be cleaned up. The clerical error was corrected fairly quickly, but it wasn't until after, for example, a railroad had, one railroad, as you know, we have two railroads, one railroad had posted a sign that said C-A-R-E-Y and one had the C-A-R-Y. So there was all kinds of confusion as far as the railroad and maps go. But we are happy that Cary was incorporated on April 3rd, 1871. And what a great place it's become. It's absolutely amazing. Ed and I were privileged to be able to see a brief history of Cary. What night was that? Tuesday night?
Tuesday night.
At the Page Walker. And it's just profound how many people invested into making this community the great place that it is today. So if you'll please join me in pledging allegiance, it'd be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for First order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Staff has requested that item 4.4, Round 36 Land Development Ordinance Amendment and 4.5, Round 36 Land Development Ordinance Amendment Consistency Statement, be removed from tonight's agenda and returned at a future date. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. We have special guests in our audience this evening. We have Boy Scout Troop 200. They're working on their citizenship and community badge. I would ask that them and any other scouts in the audience, please stand at this time to be recognized. Under recognitions, reports, and presentations, we have a presentation, the ratification of the Cary Community Plan by Planning Director Jeff Alma, who will present this item, and council may take action.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. This is the final step in solidifying the Cary Community Plan that we've prepared under the Imagine Cary process. And staff would recommend that council adopt the attached resolution that ratifies the completed Cary Community Plan. Since your adoption meeting on January 24th, the consultant team with staff have made final changes and cleanups. These include changing the names of our neighborhood designation categories on the Future Growth Framework map, as decided by council at that meeting. Making revisions and clarifications throughout the document so that references to those neighborhood names are correct. And as council requested, we've also included former councilmember Gail Adcock on the contributor page and the acknowledgements page. We've done final revisions to maps and the text of the document that don't change the recommendations or the meeting, but clean up things like text, labels, grammar, and those kinds of things. So hopefully, it's all up to snuff for you all to be able to use as we move forward into the future. And finally, staff has also included a special recognition for our peer and friend Lori Cove for her efforts in preparing the comprehensive plan. And as you all know, she was injured on October 17th, 2016, and has not been able to come back to work with us yet. So we dedicate Chapter 7, the Move Chapter, to her with this dedication paragraph. So staff's recommendation at this point is that you adopt the ratification resolution, and that will conclude our Imagine Cary process officially. And the plan is available. We are generating and producing hard copies for folks who still need paper. And many people do. And of course, it's also available on the town's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alma. Is there a motion to approve the red?
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion.
I'd just like to make one comment. I was really inspired, pleased, and quite honored that you added the comment about Lori Cove. It really touched me and I think a lot of the community. So thank you.
Thanks. There's a motion and a second. Discussion, further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Alma, stay right where you are.
Ambush.
Don't worry, Tony's still sitting.
So those that are joining us this evening may or may not know that this is Mr. Alma's last meeting. After 21 years of service, he's retiring from the town of Cary to focus on fishing and other leisure activities. And we're very grateful for your service. When Mr. Alma started, our town was about half of what it is today. And I was talking with someone earlier that said, "If you combine half of the municipalities and Wake County's population, they would equal about what we've grown from since Mr. Alma has been the Planning Director in Cary." And they're suffering from their growth. Now, we have growth issues, but we're not suffering nearly as much as they are, thanks to the great planning we've had over the years. And we continue through that rapid growth to be recognized as one of the greatest places in the United States to live, work, and play. And I think that has a lot to do with what you and your staff have done, but it's definitely from your leadership. And from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for all the services you've given this town and the citizens of Cary. And I'd like to read a proclamation recognizing your service. Whereas Jeff earned a bachelor's degree in geography from the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. Go Hills, right? And a master's in urban planning from the University of Arizona. How fitting is that? They're going. He's served as a board member for both the Arizona and North Carolina chapters of the American Planning Association. And whereas over 29 years in North Carolina local government service, Jeff is retiring. He began his public service career as the Planning Director for Pitt County from 1987 to 1996. He was a part-time lecturer in the Department of Planning at East Carolina University for eight years and has been an adjunct professor of urban planning in the Masters of Public Administration Department at North Carolina State University for 10 years. Jeff joined the town of Cary in 1996 as the Planning Director. Whereas while working at the town of Cary, the town population increased from 77,000 to nearly 160,000 today. As a result, thousands of development and rezoning proposals were approved during Jeff's tenure as Cary grew in population. And whereas during his tenure, Jeff led the development and adoption of the Land Development Ordinance, which took effect on July 1st, 2003, and has guided 38 rounds of amendments to this ordinance.
It wasn't very good, was it?
Additionally, 16 separate plans were adopted under his tenure, including the townwide land use plan of 1996, Northwest Area Plan of 2002, Growth Management Plan of 2000, and the Cary Transportation Plan of 2001, and again in 2008. And whereas, under Jeff's leadership, the Planning Department began many new initiatives characteristic of large communities, including C-Trans, now called Go Cary Bus System, downtown redevelopment, affordable housing, and historic preservation. And whereas, as an avid supporter of innovation and transparency, Jeff guided the IDT, Online Plan Submittal System, development of town-hosted neighborhood rezoning meetings, Neighborhood America, and the use of Facebook and other online feedback surveys for the Town of Cary Community Plan. And whereas, in 2012, Jeff championed the Imagine Cary effort to update Cary's comprehensive plan, building on our commitment to planning transparency and citizen involvement. The planning process actively sought public input, using a variety of traditional and innovative web-based methods to educate and engage the community. This four-year effort culminated with council adopting the Cary Community Plan in January of this year. Whereas, we're almost done. Whereas Jeff has been instrumental in the professional development of numerous town employees. Embodding the ideal employees are the town's most important resource. He has played a meaningful role in development topics and presenting at many council staff retreats, assisting the Cary Chamber of Commerce with the planning and execution of the biennial inner-city visits, and has indoctrined Planning Department staff in the virtues of fly fishing and deep meaning of country music lyrics. Now therefore, I herald Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the town of Cary, on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, express our appreciation to Jeff for his over 29 years of faithful service and devotion to enhancing the quality of life of every Cary resident. We have all repeatedly lauded Cary as a great place to live, work, and play for our families. And we thank you, Jeff, for your vision and for your leadership, and we wish you much happiness and continued success in your next chapter of life, retirement years, proclaim Jeff, I'm just one of many that has a few words to say. We're going to start off with the town manager, who's next.
This was enough. It's not like you can get fired now.
I know this won't be believable, but I really will be brief. I've had the honor and the pleasure to work with Jeff for the past seven and a half months. As I've said several times, it has been such a wonderful experience. It seemed like much longer. I hope you feel the same way, in a good way. And I know for me, it's been because Jeff has been so supportive, such a cheerleader, and been so helpful to me in understanding those key ingredients elements that have made Cary great. And what I will always live in amazement about Jeff, it's not so much that he's impacted planning beyond Cary, beyond North Carolina, throughout the country, what Cary represents as far as the ideal, the textbook way for growth management, on how to make growth work for you and not lose a sense of place, what overwhelms and other communities are succumb to that. But how the staff reflects the number one most important ideal is that our citizens come first. And as you know, council, development projects have a big impact on the people that are very near to that development. You know that better than anybody. And to often have to deal with the same issues over and over again. It'd be very easy for staff, and certainly for the director, to become very jaded, very impatient through that process. But time and again, you see the impact that Jeff has had and the staff have had on helping projects that deal with Habitat for Humanity and Katie's relatively new, and just how much they care about the citizens, they care about the citizens' feelings, and truly can empathize and help them understand how these development projects, in the end, really do work to serve all of our citizens. And to me, that requires an incredible amount of patience and understanding of why we do what we do. And Jeff, I think, really embodies that for me. And I won't hold it against you that you're leaving me. And now, Russ can do the honors as his supervisor.
Absolutely. So Jeff, yeah, one more. You don't get off that easy. I had the pleasure of razzing Jeff a little bit earlier tonight with his retirement reception, so I'm happy to do that one more time. It's my honor to say a few words about Jeff, and it's been my honor to be his supervisor for the last three and a half, going on four years now, and to have worked with him for 16 years prior to that. So as was mentioned in the proclamation, it was, when we go on a council staff retreat, it's seen for years and years and years, it was the Tim and Jeff show. So Jeff, much as Tim was, you're truly going to be missed. Before I start with comments on Jeff tonight, however, I do want to recognize that we have a number of other retirees that are, actually, I think, a record number of retirees, I'm told, that are retiring tonight or the same day as Jeff, actually tomorrow. So we should take some time to recognize them as well. So anyway, since Jeff announced his retirement earlier this year, I've had the opportunity to think and reflect on what Jeff has meant to me, meant to the organization, and meant to the community, and think about all the things that we're going to miss about you. And so I've narrowed all of those things down to my top three. So I want to go through those very quickly. But number one, I'm going to miss Jeff's commitment to public service. When I think about public servants, I think of Jeff. Searching the internet for various traits on good public servants, I came across five traits that I think Jeff has embodied throughout his 35, total of 35-year career in public service. Number one is Jeff is resilient. He responds to constant change. Yes. Number two, Jeff thinks critically. He solves big problems. Number three, Jeff is trustworthy, having great integrity and character. And I didn't know how to take character, but I said this earlier, so I say it again, and you can take character two ways. Jeff is certainly a character. Anyway, number four, Jeff communicates clearly and listens attentively. If you don't know this, Jeff is a great storyteller, and he's a teacher at heart, and is literally also a teacher. Jeff encourages and motivates others on his staff as well as across his departmental boundaries. So my second thing that I'm going to miss about Jeff, I'm going to miss his wisdom and his knowledge. And there's a quote from Socrates that's about planning that I'd like to share. And it goes like this, "By far, the greatest and most admirable form of wisdom is that need to plan and beautify cities and human communities." Jeff, I'll truly miss your wisdom and the wisdom that you share with all of us across Town Hall. And lastly, number three, I'm going to miss Jeff's smile. If you don't know, Jeff smiles a lot. And if you had the opportunity to see a lot of his pictures in the PowerPoint earlier tonight, almost everyone had a common theme about it, was Jeff's smile. So we're going to miss your happy-go-lucky attitude around town of Cary. And I didn't say this earlier, but I have to add, the other thing that you may have noticed in those pictures is Jeff's several different hairstyles. If you didn't see it, go back and look. But Jeff joined Cary in 1996, and he liked it so much, he even came back for a second stint. But when Jeff started, as the mayor said, our population was roughly half of what it is today. And in his 21-year career, he's accomplished much more than I can possibly list, but I'm going to try. All right? All right. All right. Well, the biggest and best thing Jeff's done and left us with, and it's going to touch us all over the next 20, 25 years, is our community plan. And there's many pieces of that community plan. But during the years, Jeff has left us with many plans that have helped grow and shape the community plan that we have today. We've got the Chatham County and Town of Cary Joint Use Plan. We have our Land Development Ordinance, as thank you, all 998 pages of it, we thank you, and 38 rounds and counting, as the mayor also mentioned. I didn't do this earlier, but I wanted to highlight some of his most important work in the LDO, and everyone will remember, but the two that stood out to me were bees and backyard chickens, right? Really important stuff. So we're going to remember, if we ever need to bring Jeff back for assistance on other things, we'll do that. And something that came to mind is maybe goats, pot-billy pigs, or other animals in varmint, since you're so good at, other good at animals in the LDO. We've got our Community Appearance Manual. We've got our Town Center Area Plan, TCAP. We've got the Northwest Area Plan out of Jeff. We've got an Austin Activity Concept Plan out of Jeff. Southwest Area Plan, 2020 Affordable Housing Plan, and a Historic Preservation Plan, and many more. But, here, you keep that. All right, thanks. Anyway. Jeff's work has and will continue to touch us all into the future, and for that, we thank him. Jeff, you're a remarkable person, a friend, you've been a great coworker, and thank you for your dedicated service to us all.
Councilmembers, have anything to say?
Well.
Jack, you were there before Jeff.
You know, I'm going to, they're all saying what they're going to miss, you know? I'm going to explain what I will not miss. And that is, I've really enjoyed when Jeff would go on my golf trips, because I finally thought I had someone I could beat. And then, you know, not that I have a good memory, but several years ago at Reedy Creek, when I was ahead and we were on the 16th hole on the par three, 190 yards, and I put the ball pretty close, he hits a five wood right next to the cup and wins the hole and then wins the match. So I'm not going to miss that anymore, Jeff, but.
Bad idea.
But I think I speak for, you know, you've heard it before, your counsel, your wisdom, your approachability, those are things that I will miss, Jeff, and looking forward to you in retirement to come back and join us on the trips.
Thank you, Jack. Other comments?
I'll just say, yeah, I think the first time I met you was the Smart Growth Task Force back in 98, and Jeff had hair at the time, and a mustache, so it was a different time. But you've been a great friend. Not only have you been an excellent planning director for this town, but you've been a great friend to the staff members and to all of us on the council. And I will always remember fondly the Tim and Jeff and Bill days.
I'd like to say, of all the staff members that I met going through the orientation after being elected, after being elected, I bumped into Jeff in the Staples. And we had quite a talk, and he just made me feel so welcome and so excited about what we were getting ready to embark on with you guys. And it made me so, just gave me that at-home feeling that it was going to be a great ride, and it was about people, and it wasn't about necessary plans. The plans had to do with people, and I appreciate that about you. And I look forward to seeing you in your retirement, maybe seeing you in Ireland, doing some planning over there. I look forward to it.
It was almost 20 years ago when I first met Jeff. I was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board, and Jeff gave me a little orientation, that's a good word, I guess, into planning and zoning. And I remember after that, just saying, "How do they do all this? How does all this stuff get done?" It was amazing. And now, a couple decades later, I'm still amazed at how all this stuff gets done, but I know how it gets done. And it gets done with great skill, professionalism, and gets done the Cary way. And I think, Jeff, you epitomized that. And we're going to miss you. Wish you the best of luck and blessings.
Thank you.
So since everybody's saying when they met Jeff, this is like the, what would Jeff, what would Jeff do kind of moment? I met Jeff when I was at the School of Government for the first time, and you were going through what planning and zoning was like. And I remember we were all going through, for people who might be watching this, you go through an exercise of your own planning and zoning. And I had this area in Western Cary, and I was going to put a water park there. I thought that would be great for Western Cary, just like, "Oh, we've never thought of that before. Did you hear of the Aquatic Center?" Like, "Oh, that wasn't really a good idea." And what I thought was really great about Jeff, and still is, is that this stuff is hard, this stuff is complicated, and you make it look easy. That's what I think is so amazing for people who do things well, is when we don't really know how hard it is until we're in the thick of it, and you also make it fun. I will always remember our inner-city trip when everybody else was just sitting around and Jeff and I were out on the dance floor. And so he knows how to bring the fun to every event. So I hope you pass that on to somebody for the next set of trips to make sure that that keeps going. Thank you.
When I first met Jeff, it wasn't really under the best of circumstances. But I've always appreciated your professionalism and your kindness, and most importantly, your honesty with me through that. And as time went on, as we got to know each other, I got to know you for the amazing person that you are. I'm going to miss your wealth of knowledge, probably be more than anything, as long as your sense of humor and good attitude. I said this about Tim, and you're probably one of the few others that I would say it about, you're a walking encyclopedia of all things Cary, and I think that's probably what us in the town will miss more than anything, is just your institutional knowledge that there is no, I got to go look that up and get back to you. There, it's, yeah, you know the answer, and you know the answer now. And it's made our jobs and probably a lot of other people's jobs a lot easier. You're an incredibly bright person. I'm not sure where you're going from here, but wherever it is, I'm sure you're going to be a success and be damn good at it. So I wish you the best in your retirement, and I'm sure we'll probably see you around sometime in the future, so.
Jeff, thank you. We love you. We're going to miss you. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and Council. Yeah, there's a lot of, the word Jeff was in a lot of those things, but Jeff didn't do it alone. And so you've got other dedicated folks here to carry the torch and keep going, and staff, particularly in the Planning Department, they are committed to continuing to make Cary the best place it can be. And with leadership and management leadership, the community itself getting involved, I mean, the sky's the limit. So I've had a great run and a great time, and I thank you all for that opportunity. And I do live in Cary, and Paula and I will be watching you occasionally on TV. And then, you never know when somebody might show up at Public Speaks Out. Three minutes. Three-minute limit. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, how do you follow that up? Well, we're going to follow it up with a proclamation. We're going to present Fit Cary Month Proclamation, and I'm going to ask that staff join Councilmember France at the podium for the presentation.
All the fun parts, people, please join me at the podium. All the fun parts, people, please join me at the podium.
He's out of here.
You don't want them to come up?
I know.
Here we are. Sorry about this. Ooh, I got two of them. Thankfully, they give me this one with really nice big print that I can read, since the eyes aren't as fit as they used to be. Well, as the council liaison to the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory Board, it's my honor to recognize April 2017 as Fit Cary Month in the town of Cary. And whereas the National Recreation and Parks Association recognized Cary as a gold medal award winner for excellence in park and recreation management, an award given to communities that demonstrate excellence in park and recreation management, and recognize the importance of health and wellness in their communities, and whereas the town is dedicated to offering programs and activities that promote active lifestyles and healthy eating to maintain good health, and whereas April 5th is National Walking Day, designed by the American Heart Association to remind people about the health benefits of taking a walk, I join them in challenging all of our citizens and employees to walk for at least 30 minutes on this day. And whereas regular physical activity can boost brain power, melt away stress, build relationships, ward off diseases, and create a stronger heart, all of which improve the quality of life for everyone in Cary. And whereas the combination of healthy, active lifestyles and healthy eating are critical for maintaining good health and preventing disease, a healthier population also means long-term cost savings for our society at large. Whereas the town hosts Wake County Senior Games Athletic and Art Competitions during April to promote fitness, friendship, and well-being for all residents ages 50 and older in Wake County, and Wake County Senior Games has the largest competition in the state. And whereas to celebrate Fit Cary Month for 2017, the public is invited to participate in Get Moving Mondays at the Downtown Park, and Yak and Track with the mayor, but yakity-yak, don't talk back, at Bond Park, and a Greenway Half Marathon, as well as other free fitness and arts activities to improve both body and mind. Now therefore, I, Don France, on behalf of Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Cary, and the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Fit Cary Month in the town of Cary, and encourage the entire community to become more physically active and support policies and programs to help them to do exactly that. Proclaim this 30th day of March 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor and Council, for all you do to support a healthy, fit Cary. April is the month to celebrate Get Fit, Be Fit, and Stay Fit Cary. We welcome everyone to join the many activities, classes, and programs that we have to offer, many of which are free for April. This year, we've added several new components. To highlight our new downtown park, we've planned the Get Moving Mondays, which kicks off with line dancing on Monday, April 3rd, at 1:00 p.m. So, I hope to see you all there. A variety of other activities are offered each month at the park, and the schedule is posted on the Fit Cary webpage. Each week, the month offers citizens free opportunities to participate. For the week of April 3rd, join us as, join us for select free fitness and wellness classes at the three community centers, as well as the senior center. The second week, pledge to walk during the week by filling out a pledge form, also on the town's website. And you don't want to miss the mayor on April 11th for the Yak and Track at Bond Park, kayak, canoe, pedal, and walk. The week of April 17th, it's free open gym, week which includes basketball, table tennis, pickleball, preschool open gym, badminton, and volleyball. The week, the last week culminates with Spring Days in Bond Park, which includes the Spring Days Wellness Challenge. And you don't want to miss the free arts events, which are sprinkled throughout the month. For more information, just visit the town's website and search Fit Cary Month. Thank you all so very much.
Okay, we'll now move to our third item on the agenda, Public Speaks Out. Our next agenda item has included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the printed agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic, as long as it's not a public hearing, and that is to your benefit, because at public hearings, you get more time. I'll enforce a three-minute time limit to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the podium, and when the green light turns yellow, the speaker has 30 seconds remaining. And when the yellow light turns to a flashing red light, that means your time has expired. And not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers, at that time, I'm going to immediately interrupt you and ask you to conclude your comments. And I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our three-minute time limit. And we ask that if you're here with a group, have a spokesperson for that group to speak on behalf of everyone, to reduce repetitive comments. I thank everyone in our audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, council. My name is Nathaniel Green. I've been a resident of Cary for almost three years now, and I'm excited to come to you this evening to make an announcement. Before I get there, I just want to say that when I first came here, Cary was my first place that my family bought a home. And when we moved here, we moved in the northwestern portion, which is a very fast-growing area of Cary. And it took us a while to get involved. It took us, it took me a little bit to really get my roots, also get used to my new job. And then, after we really got a base, we started to get involved in our community and get involved with you all as well at the town level. I've learned a lot just in these three years, and I hope to continue to learn more. And that just started with something I was very excited about, starting last night, the School of Government, very excited to be a part of that. Sean, I've ordered my book, County and Municipal Government in North Carolina, it's on its way. So I'm excited to get into that. So, with all of that that I've learned, I've tried to engage folks in our area, and they are also excited and want to get involved. So, with like-minded residents in our area, I'd like to announce that we formed a volunteer organization called the Northwest Cary Community Connection. The goal of this group is to really engage our residents, inform our residents, and how specifically to most effectively engage with government, not just at the town level, but at the state level, at the county level, and with NPOs. I wish to really impart that knowledge to others, and then also use that as a mechanism to promote and sometimes create community in our area as well. I'd like to encourage people in our area to engage and collaborate with our state and local officials, both elected and appointed, as well as our communities, and bring the most pressing needs and opportunities that exist in Northwest Cary to best serve our residents and families. I'm very excited about the opportunity. We are a new group. We've got NorthwestCary.org, you can check us out to see what we've got going. It's really immensely an educational website, and may become a nonprofit again, under the guise of being an educational association, aim to really inform the public on how best to use their time when engaging, and how to build community appropriately. So, with that, we're hoping to host our first event in the next month or so. I hope to have a couple of you guys out. I've already talked with a couple of you, to have you out formally in our area and help engage our community, talk about what's on the, in the future horizons for our community, and hope to continue to work with you in the future. So, this is the first step, and I hope to be a great adventure. And thank you again for being so positive and engaging, and such a great example of a great local government. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Next speaker, please. Anyone else?
My name is Bob Granon. I'm the Chief Financial Officer and a member of the Board of Directors of Cary Players Community Theater. Ed may recognize me as the leg-delivery man in A Christmas Story, or the goon in It's a Wonderful Life. A little bit of stage, you know, typecasting going on there. I'm not here to ask for money, I'm not here to complain, I'm not here to ask for a variance, but I am going to offer a thank you to the town of Cary, to do a little bragging and to extend an invitation. We began in 2002 as a community theater with a goal of being the Town of Cary's Community Theater Company. We wanted you to look upon us proudly and be glad to see us a part of this community. You've shown your commitment, not only with money, but participation. There's some people at this table who have judged the ugly sweater contest. The police chief, the fire chief, the mayor, others have had what I would say cameo roles in some of our performances. Some of your people, like Lyman Collins, Sarah Preston, Kalen Waddle, have brought us technical expertise that's made our shows even become better. I say we want to be proud, and what should be proud of us, so I'm going to brag a little bit more, we've completed over 300 performances. Over 40,000 people have seen our performances. We believe we are responsible for the largest number of people to pass through the doors of the Cary Arts Center, that's over 25,000. Over 2,000 people in the community have volunteered as either performers, behind-the-scenes, or volunteers as part of our performances. We believe that's a big part of making downtown Cary a gathering place. I have to say that I've become a periodic visitor of some of our microbrew pubs. Our actors tend to want to gather after a strenuous performance to relax. I tell you, we always find the places in Cary to do that, and we're very proud of that. And lastly, I do want to extend an invitation, our last show of the season is The Mouse Trap. I'm going to pass on a couple flyers, and if you don't have a better thing to do, either starting this Friday night through Sunday, or next Friday night through Sunday, this is a great place for a date night or a time on the town of Cary. We appreciate what you do for us, expect big things for us to continue in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
I'm not a big public speaker or anything, but I came here tonight with a couple of my neighbors.
Could you give us your name, please?
Oh, sorry. Hey, my name is Andy Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Mm-hmm. I came here tonight with a couple of my neighbors, just to kind of raise awareness of a situation going on in our neighborhood. We live over near the West High and Cary Parkway intersection, I think you're familiar with it. And I just wanted to point out that we've had, my neighbors who are with me have lived here since 1991, and in that time, they have had flooding of different severity levels at least 10 times. And this, I've only lived there since the end of last year, about a year and a half now. And in that time, I've seen, I've had one flood that actually came into the house, or into the garage, I should say, and into the bottom of the crawl space. My neighbors have it a little bit worse, their house is a little lower in that neighborhood, and they had it, luckily, their house is also a little higher, but they still had flooding that came into their crawl space, did a lot of damage. And with the amount of time that's gone by, and the amount of instances of this, just wanted to raise awareness of this. And I've seen two situations where this happened. One, actually, I wasn't even home, luckily, it was in July when we had a huge storm. So that storm is the one that got into my garage, filled up my crawl space, I had to have all the insulation ductwork all redone, thousands of dollars. Their house was worse than that, more thousands of dollars. And, excuse me, I had only really pictures and, you know, information about the aftermath from that one. But luckily, if you can call it that, we had Hurricane Matthew come by in October, and I was home for that one. And even though that one didn't rise, believe it or not, a hurricane of all things didn't rise to the level of a previous flood in July, it showed what it can do, and it showed the pathways. I have pictures on my laptop, I don't, I can, you know, if this comes further, I have information I can provide. But it showed that the, from what we can tell, the culvert that goes over West High gets inundated with water, and in the flooding from Hurricane Matthew, you can see that, I have pictures of this one, the water is over the holes that go through under the road. And from the flooding that happened in July, again, all I have is information about the aftermath, but you can see evidence that the water was even higher than that, from where the debris and stuff was clinging to the railings above that culvert. So, just wanted to point that out, because we, I'd like to see if there's any chance at some point of getting that fixed to be allowing, you know, allow the water to go through in that area, and stop the damage.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And staff has your contact information if you left it to the town clerk?
Yes.
They'll be in touch with you. Please keep in mind, and they'll talk with you about this, that flooding is a very complex issue, mainly because you can't spend public money on private property. So, that's step one. There's a million others, and they're going to talk with you about that.
Okay.
And we'll tell you what we can and can't do, so.
Sure, sure.
But they'll be in touch with you, and town manager has your, well, the town clerk will give the town manager a contact information.
Great. Well, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I didn't fill out a card.
You can still speak. You can fill out a card after you speak, that will be fine.
My name is Howard Kelly, I'm his neighbor. What he was talking about was really terrible for us. It cost us a lot of money, water came into the garage, and it was five feet around the house. And that, you know, we were, we've been experiencing this since we moved here. We moved here in 1991, I think it was. And it started out small. You had some flooding that was maybe a couple of feet, two feet maybe, or foot. Couple of years later, was more. What happened was, when they kept building around us, they didn't seem to care where the water was going to go to. And I know there was a new, there was something that was put out about the builders now, builders now have to have at least somewhere for the water to go to, but I guess in that time, they didn't, because they didn't do it. And I got a whole bunch of stuff here that I sent out after that big flood that we had. And I sent it out to Kenneth George, Mayor Weinbrecht, Lori Bush, and Dan Clinton. I got a response from Dan only. I really was upset about that, because I don't even know if you've read my stuff. And it was a good, it was a very good information that, you know, that what happened to us and what's happening around us. And we know that you're trying to fix, we know that you're trying to fix it. But we're just hoping that, I mean, I came here, I loved Cary. Unfortunately, with all the stuff that's going on now, I sit on pins and needles when I have to hear that there's another storm coming. And I'm now, I'm doing sandbags. I mean, it's not a war zone, but in order to try to keep it out of my garage, and out of my crawl space, I have to do sandbags now. So, I really hope that something gets done, and maybe who, let's see, Lori? Maybe if you can go back and find out what I sent you? It was from Howard Kelly, and maybe read it for me?
Sir, I don't have it, but if you could resend it to us, that would be great.
Okay, because I got the guy who signed for everything, and that's why I think, I don't know if everybody got it. So what do you think the best thing for me to do? Because I'm not going, I can't do that again.
Mayor, may I just suggest that you send any information you have to the town council, and the town clerk will give you the address.
Okay, I'd appreciate that very much, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And just so you're aware, I answered all my emails in half for 10 years. So I promise you, if you sent me an email and I got it, I answered it.
It wasn't an email.
Oh, it wasn't an email.
But was this.
Okay.
Okay.
There you go. Next speaker, please.
You know, it might be good to mention the webpage that we just created about flooding.
Go ahead. While we wait... While we wait on our next speaker, Ms. Robinson?
Sure. So our staff just put together an excellent webpage on our Town of Cary website, all about flooding, what we do to help citizens that have flooding issues, also what we've done to our ordinance is to change them, to make it more difficult for developments to create stormwater runoff that will impact people downstream. It's an excellent webpage, it really includes a lot of information, so I'd encourage our citizens who have flooding or have friends with flooding to take a look at that page. And I would just say, I understand Mr. Kelly's frustration. I grew up in a house that flooded, and my parents were nervous every time it rained or snow melted. It's a very stressful experience, I sympathize.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out before we move to the consent agenda? Seeing no one, I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we move to the consent agenda, which is item four. And for the benefit of watching, people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. We have round 38 land development ordinance amendments and consensities statement. 16A23 Peggy Howard Luder and Grover Luder annexation resolution scheduling public hearing. Ratification of ordinance for rezoning case 16REZ14 East Chatham Residential. Would any council members like these items, one of these items pulled for discussion? If not, it would entertain a motion to approve.
Someone?
There's a motion and a second.
Jack and Lori?
Jack and, yeah.
I didn't do it.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rule applies for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Instead of five minutes for your comments, you now, I mean, instead of three minutes, you now have five minutes for your comments. And our first public hearing is the 17A01 Robert Rich Annexation. Mr. Nicholas will introduce the hearing, and council may take action tonight. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This first request is for annexation of 2.45 acres located at 916 Reedy Creek Road, approximately 1,700 feet southeast of the intersection with North Harrison Avenue. The annexation will also include 0.51 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The existing property is located within Cary's ETJ, and it's contiguous to the existing corporate limits, and it's Zoned Residential 40. This request is not associated with the development plan, the owner is wishing to connect to town utilities and receive town services.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for 17A01 Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion to approve annexation 17A01?
There's a motion?
A second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move to our second item. Public hearing for annexation 17A02 S&amp;K Partnership LLC Annexation. Mr. Nicholas will once again introduce the hearing, and council may take action. Mr. Nicholas.
This request is for annexation of nine acres located on Green Level Church Road, approximately 540 feet south of the intersection with Horton's Creek Road. Annexation will also include 1.17 acres of adjacent right-of-way. Property is located in Cary's ETJ, and it's contiguous to the corporate limits, and it's also Zoned Residential 8 Conditional Use. Request is associated with a subdivision plan that proposes a total of 17 lots for detached dwellings.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for public hearing 17A02 on the annexation for S&amp;K Partnership LLC, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion to approve annexation 17A02?
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move to item number three, another annexation 16A24 Hawthorne F. Parkside Apartments LLC. Mr. Nicholas will introduce it. Council may take action. Mr. Nicholas.
This request is for annexation of approximately 17 acres located at 7215 O'Kelly Chapel Road. It's in the southwest quadrant of the O'Kelly Chapel Road and NC55 Highway intersection. Request will also, or the annexation will also include 1.86 acres of adjacent right-of-way. Property is located within Cary's ETJ, and it's contiguous to the corporate limits, it's Zoned Residential Multi-Family and also Office and Research and Development. It's also located within the Mixed Use Overlay District. Request is associated with Development Plan 15SP53, which proposes a total of 204 multifamily units. Following the public hearing, no action by council's need this evening, this petition will be placed on a future agenda for action to coincide with the associated plan.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for public hearing 16A24 Hawthorne Parkside Apartments LLC Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Questions or comments from council before we move this to, well, before we move to the next item? Okay, this will come to us at a future meeting. We now move to our fourth item. It is a rezoning. We're on item 5.4, 17REZO2 1620 Wakina Road rezoning. Ms. Dry will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but instead, it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation, and it will return to council at a future date for action. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, council. For your consideration, it's a request to rezone 2.55 acres at 1620 Wakina Road. The site, which is highlighted here in yellow, is accessed from Wakina Road to the north. Wakina Road takes access from Indian Wells, which is off of NC55, or NC Highway 55 located over here to the east. NC540 is located to the west. Although the site has a Wakina Road address, it doesn't actually have furniture on Wakina Road. As you can see from this vicinity map, the site is located south of properties that are adjacent to Wakina Road. The south, the site is also north of Morrisville Parkway, as you can see here, to the south. The site is currently vacant, as you can see from this aerial image, it is mostly wooded. The Sedgfield subdivision is located over here to the east. You can see in this image, construction for the Friars Gate subdivision to the west. And again, Morrisville Parkway to the south, Wakina Road to the north. This map indicates the current zoning of existing lots in the area. The current zoning for the subject property is R40, indicated here in brown. You can see the lots to the north, right here, are Zoned R8 Conditional Use. The cross hashing indicates conditions associated with those, that rezoning. The properties to the east and south are Zoned PDD, which is indicated in purple. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to R8 Conditional Use. This zoning, we keep the land use as a residential use, but would allow an increased density and a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. The applicant has proposed conditions for this rezoning request. These include limiting the land use to detached dwellings and neighborhood recreation, and limiting the density to a maximum of three dwellings per acre. Three dwellings per acre for, for the site, which is 2.55 acres, would equal a maximum of seven lots. The subject site is in an area that has seen many development requests over the last few years. This map highlights some of the recent development activity. Each project case is indicated in a unique color on the map. The subject site is located south, again, this is Wakina Road, so the subject site is located south of Wakina Road. The properties directly to the north, in green, were recently rezoned and are currently in development plan review with the town. They're going to be called the Wellfilled Subdivision. The properties to the north and west to the site, and then across Wakina Road, again, are also recently approved for a rezoning and are in development review with the town. That development plan is called the Reserve at Wakina. So this is a picture of the draft plan for the Wellfilled Subdivision, showing how the subject property would receive access, road access. So the subject property is located here in gray, and the draft plan for the Wellfilled Subdivision shows a proposed road network that would take access from Wakina Road and down to the subject site. This plan for Wellfilled Subdivision, again, is not approved, it is still in review, so the future approved plan may look different than what you see here. As the case progresses, staff will be evaluating the case with respect to aspects of the newly adopted Cary Community Plan. For the sake of those in the audience, many people are familiar with the town's initiative called Imagine Cary. This is the logo for Imagine Cary up here. Imagine Cary was a multi-year process that led to the adoption of the Cary Community Plan. Now that the Cary Community Plan is adopted, as of January 2017, the rezoning will be evaluated based on the guidance from the plan. The aspects for evaluation will include plan policies and the site's future growth framework map designation. A preliminary evaluation of the project has been conducted. The evaluation includes first, a review of all of the policies in the Cary Community Plan and identification of those that are applicable. A list of the full plan policies and those that were selected for applicability are included as an attachment in the staff report. Further, a preliminary evaluation of those applicable policies is included in the body of the staff report. And a full evaluation of the case under the Cary Community Plan policies will be provided as the case moves forward in the process. Some of the policies that were found to be applicable dealt with the type of housing being proposed and the density. The type of housing being proposed is detached dwellings and a density of three dwellings per acre. Both the type of housing and the density are similar to those in the area. Further, the site is an infill site, meaning that it is currently vacant, and if the rezoning is approved, it will allow for the site to be developed in a similar nature to surrounding properties. On the future growth framework map, which is a policy found in the Shape Chapter of the Cary Community Plan, the site is designated as Mixed Neighborhood. And that's, the Mixed Neighborhood is indicated in the dark pink here, and this, again, is the site. This neighborhood, an example of which is the Amberly Subdivision. So again, the Mixed Neighborhood type contains substantial type, variety of housing types, unit sizes, lot sizes, and densities. Predominant use types for this category may include single-family detached, multifamily housing, single-family attached. And the Residential 8 zoning district is an appropriate district in the mixed, the Mixed Neighborhood District. According to the Town of Cary GIS maps, the site is impacted by stream buffers to the south. So again, this is the site, and you can see the stream buffers along the southern property border. Evaluation of the actual location will be determined at the time of development plan review. According to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan, the site, which, oh, which is part of the Engage Chapter of the Cary Community Plan, proposes no new public parkland or public greenways on the subject property. However, the property is located within 400 feet of the Morrisville Parkway Streetside Trail and the Green Hope High School Greenway. According to the Move Chapter of the Cary Community Plan, which includes the town's Conference of Transportation Plan, Wakina Road is a collector road, indicated here with the blue line. The closest thoroughfares are NC50, NC Highway 55, and Morrisville Parkway to the south. There was a neighborhood meeting held for the site on February 1st. There were no attendees at this meeting. Further, staff has not received any feedback, either positive or negative, from nearby property owners prior to this public hearing. Properties within 800 feet of the subject site were notified of the public hearing. The property was posted with public hearing signs, and legal ads were placed in accordance with the Town of Cary Land Development Ordinance. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share comments on the rezoning request. Following that, staff will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. At this time, I'll invite the applicant forward for their comments.
I'm JW Sharon with JS Development Company. We're glad to be here tonight to hopefully complete the donut hole that you see in front of you. But I'd like to begin by saying, if you remember, two years ago, the three parcels that sit directly north, or at least the two, were brought in by an owner-initiated rezoning to make it R8 Conditional Use, to tie in with everything that was going in the area. And since that time, our company has proposed the new Wellfilled Subdivision in review by staff. And in doing so, we noticed this piece of property that sits to the south, everything drains that way, we would be needing connecting to sewer such that we would like to incorporate it. The land has been owned by the current owner for a number of years, that developed the Sedgfield as well as the Highland Preserve. And it was never added because, as you see, the stream crossing there would have been significant for two acres. So it really never had any access. So what we're doing now is just filling in this piece to tie to. Basically, you've got two and a half acres there with the densities we proposed, you'll be adding seven lots. Wellfilled Subdivision to the north, we're doing is 26 lots with an average of 11,000 square feet, which almost doubled what Sedgfield is. We feel it'll be a good fit to complete this area, and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharon. Now's the time for public hearing 17REZO2, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone for this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments. Seeing none, this will be forwarded to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation at a future date. We now move to our fifth public hearing. It's 17REZO1 6200 Holly Springs Road rezoning. Ms. Spearman will introduce this item. Council will not take action this evening on this rezoning, but instead refer it to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation, and it will return to us at a future date for action. Ms. Spearman?
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the public hearing for a proposed rezoning of slightly over one acre located at 6200 Holly Springs Road. Here you can see the site is on the west side of Holly Springs Road, about a quarter mile south of Tryon Road. Here's a different view, you can see some of the nearby development in the area. Colonial Baptist Church immediately to the north, Coventry Glen subdivision to the east, South Hills Baptist Church, a short distance to the south, and then to the northwest, the Swift Creek Shopping Center. This is a closer view of the site itself. It currently contains an occupied single-family residence. The existing zoning on the site is R40. The proposed zoning is Transitional Residential Conditional Use, and there is one zoning condition proposed that would limit the land use to townhomes. There are several recently approved rezonings and development plans in the vicinity of this site. Here you can see the Pritchett tract, which was rezoned to R8 Conditional Use and R12 Conditional Use in 2014. That rezoning allowed the development of up to 93 detached dwellings, and you can see how this has been partially approved with the subdivision approvals. Also, the Kensington East Townhome rezoning was approved. This was to the MXD, the Mixed Use District, and allows a maximum of 53 townhomes and seven detached dwellings. Immediately adjacent to the property is the Kensington Place rezoning that was zoned, where the property was zoned to Transitional Residential Conditional Use in 2014. The land use for this case was limited to townhomes with a maximum density of six units per acre. So on this portion of the site, there would be a maximum of 88 units. A development plan for 63 townhomes on a portion of this site has been approved, and you can see the road network in gray that was approved as part of that development. So this takes us to the subject property, which, if this is approved, then this property would, the applicant intends to incorporate this into the Piper's Crossing Development Plan, a portion of which has been approved. And you can see the ultimate street network that would be proposed there would be to extend the townhome development to another access point on Holly Springs Road, and then pull an area, another street to the area to the south to incorporate the remainder of this entire TRCU area into Piper's Crossing. This is just... This is just a more detailed view of that subdivision. You can see the townhome units that have been approved here under the Area C. Area A is the subject property. This Area B is a portion of the previous rezoning case that has not yet been approved with the site plan. There is an existing residence on this Area B, also an existing residence on Area A, and the intent is when those residences are no longer occupied, that this would be integrated into one development. This is a future growth framework map from the Cary Community Plan, and the site is designated as a traditional neighborhood. It abuts an area designated as the Crossroads Destination Center. This is an example of a traditional neighborhood. This is a graphic for the Lockmere area that comes from the Cary Community Plan. This shows where the focus for the traditional neighborhood is on detached housing, with other types of housing allowed or accommodated at strategic locations, which, in this case, similar to the case before you tonight, is at the, along the borders of the neighborhoods. So this is an area where you can see in Lockmere where higher intensity or more different housing types are allowed along the edges, and that's the same type of situation that we have before you this evening. Some of the key policies from the Cary Community Plan that we think replicable to this case relate primarily to infill and the creation of a transition, which in this case would be between the Destination Center and then the detached, single-family neighborhoods to the east, or to the west. And in addition, there's also an attachment in your staff report that includes a list of all of the policies that are applicable, or that are included in the plan, and then a little more detailed analysis in the staff report of the individual policies that relate to these areas. This slide shows the stream buffers and the floodplain network in the area. And here you can see the location of planned greenways in the vicinity. There are several major thoroughfares in the vicinity of the site. Holly Springs Road is adjacent to the site and provides the access. And then Tryon Road, you can see, to the north, and Cary Parkway, which ties into Holly Springs Road to the south. There are currently no transit routes in the immediate vicinity. There is a future Go Cary route proposed along Tryon Road and north along Holly Springs Road. And again, Tryon Road is about a quarter-mile to the north. At the neighborhood meeting, which was held on February 1st, there were seven attendees from the neighborhood. There were several questions and concerns related to traffic, the widening of Holly Springs Road, and perimeter buffers and street skates. This map shows properties that were notified of the public hearing. And that concludes staff's comments. Following the applicant's comments in public hearing, staff will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Spearman. At this time, I'll invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
I'm Richard Lad. I'm here as the Honorable Representative of Bob and Virginia Manard, who's occupies the house and the residence. I was a part of the rezoning behind the subject property. As we got into development and layout, things had to change, and so we have an imaginary rezoning line that kind of cuts about half of an acre out of his 1.5 acres it's own transition residential. So all we're trying to do is just to fill in this little donut hole and stay consistent with the surrounding properties and just kind of keep everything in relation to the town plan. And so it's no development plan. I'm just here to represent the owners who can't be here tonight, but it's just to fill in that one acre that's not zoned for transition residential.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing for rezoning 17REZ01, 6200 Holly Springs Road, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments?
I just have a quick question. When I was looking at this, the first section, I remember when we did this, it was 63 townhomes, and then B was added, and now A is being added. So what is, what is the total development plan? How many townhomes will be in this, in final Piper's Crossing?
When you look at the zoning conditions for the remainder of this, if you were to, the zoning conditions in both cases are limited to townhomes. There's not a specific density limit included as a zoning condition, so it's just the six units per acre that were, that would be allowed by the TR zoning district. So since the, without there being any unique-type zoning conditions other than that that would affect, you know, these parcels separately, then we would look at, we would look at the combined development plan so that there would be six units per acre overall for the total area.
So the six units per acre, how big is that entire area, then? What does that look after?
The, for the, it would be about 92, 93 units. For the area that's included currently, the limit is 88, based on the acreage. The actual number of units that is, has been approved within that area is less than that, considerably less than that. So based on the acreage alone, it would probably be theoretically about 90. However, only 63 have been approved with the development plan, and when you add in the same pattern, it would come to substantially less than that.
So no transportation, no TIA is required since it's under 100? Is that right?
There would, it does, it would not meet, it doesn't meet-
Doesn't meet the criteria.
It doesn't meet the criteria, even if the maximum development was included, even if it had been included in a single rezoning, it would still not have triggered that threshold.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, it brings up a good point, Lori. It's kind of a bizarre location, when you see the fork there. And when, when you're coming off Tryon and heading down, you really need some road treatment there, because the two lanes off Tryon stop suddenly at Colonial Baptist.
Exactly, yep.
And there's no, you know, like with yields and everything, you have this ability to kind of merge in. You don't really have it there. Now, they made some improvement, a little bit, moving a little farther south of that exit from Colonial Baptist. But that's getting to be a nasty little merge there. And my concern is with all these happening piecemeal, you know, the 100 on that side or the 88 the other side. This is a classic case where, when they're coming in in bits and pieces, we've got a little bit of a mess there. And I don't know what the answer is, but there better not be any way to get out from there. I mean, I saw on the earlier slide, I think it was Slide 47, where the proposal was to move the entrance farther south. So, you know, if there's any entrance where that is, it's going to be a mess. It's going to be a real, serious mess, and we, as a town, need to look closely at that. People sneaking in and out, not sneaking in, but going in and out of Swift Creek at that little fork there. When they come pouring out and trying to make the left to go south on Holly Springs, you've got the people coming off Tryon, it's starting to merge. I don't know what our traffic, if there's any traffic information or data. I think it moves so slow and it's so, so bad, it doesn't give you the opportunity for the accident. But my caution is, you've got a mess there. Somehow, I don't know how to fix it.
And so I guess what I'm hearing is it'd be nice to get some information about future road improvements, what's funded, what's not, what's planned, that kind of thing.
A couple of things I can tell you at this point that may help with that specifically with this site. When the, as part of the rezoning case for the property to the south, they did offer a zoning condition to make the road improvement along the front edge of this property. So, so that would be, you know, could be done together. So there's, there was a prior commitment to do that, although now it would, you know, certainly be a requirement with this rezoning. And also, you know, there, you know, in terms of the design of this road, my understanding is that there is a median through this area that would affect that as well.
Good evening, K. I wanted to expand a little bit on that. So when, the Kensington developments that are on both sides, plus the other developments along that corridor, when all those improvements are finished by those developments, we'll have two lanes in each direction all the way from Jones Franklin Road to Cary Parkway. So that merge condition that you were talking about should get finished with-
Should get finished.
Should get with these projects. So that is the good news.
Yeah, and I believe the reduced density was also because I think they worked with the community next door. So, I mean, I'm not really knocking the developers as much as that's going to get tricky there, and I want to make sure that it's on the long-
We actually got the developers of Kensington to do a little bit more towards the church so that we could get a full two lanes instead of having to merge down and then merge back to one.
Mr. George.
Yeah, where is the, where is, on the Holly Springs Road, where is it supposed to be six lanes instead of four lanes?
It's, it's actually six lanes all the way south of Tryon Road to our, to our ETJ down at 540. We just changed that with our, update to our community plan.
So with this coming in, I just heard you say there'd be two lanes in each direction. With this coming in, will they be dedicating and building the third lane on their side?
So the developments that have already been approved here, they will be building to a four-lane median-divided roadway, but if this piece were to come in next month or next year, whenever it gets approved, we would make them prove it to half a six lanes, or-
That's what I was asking.
Or make, or make some financial contribution towards six lanes anyway. But we would get, we would get the right-of-way necessary for a six lane and all that at that time.
All right, so, but just for this little-
Just for that little piece.
Yes, sir. Okay, so then we have, then we have another lane dropping off a little bit later, Jack.
Interesting.
Okay.
Other comments, questions?
Man, I don't have a problem. It seems to fit with the project overall. I would just say, from a personal standpoint, it's kind of a nice, single-family house, house. I kind of hate to lose that one, nice circular driveway and all that stuff, but-
It's not historic, is it, Ed?
Well, I, I don't know specifically, but it certainly, if it isn't now, it would be in a couple of years when it-
A few hundred years.
It's a beautiful home. It's a period piece.
My only comment is from 30,000-foot level. I'm getting very concerned that from, all the way from the intersection of Walnut and US-1, all the way to the church south of here, it's either commercial or townhomes, all the way. And that's, I've seen cities that develop that way, and they're ugly. I don't want this area to be that way. So I'm very concerned, I mean, from this point forward, we've really got to be careful in this area. We're really mucking it up, so I'm really concerned about that. That's my only comment.
I mean, my, my concern, and the reason I brought it up, is we see this quite a bit where something comes in and then a piecemeal gets added, and then the developer, you know, someone next door says, "Oh, well, it's going to be townhomes anyway. I might as well sell my property." And so I totally understand from a property owner's perspective, yeah, I might as well make it better. And, and it does fill a donut hole, right? It definitely makes, it makes sense. But what happens from my perspective, and I think from everyone else around it, is when they, when they're piecemeal added and there's no transportation study that's done, traffic study that's done, we really don't know what the impact is. And this happens most of the time in West Cary, and this time it's happening, you know, in an older part of Cary. And I can see how folks around there would be very concerned, you know, what's the impact on the traffic for here, for this area?
Other comments, questions?
I appreciate the comments and those made, but I just don't see how one-acre parcel-
Yeah, one acre.
One acre is not making or breaking this area.
No, but it's one acre.
Previously proved projects that were a much greater size that this council approved may have.
I agree with you there.
Totally understand.
Any, any other comments? Okay, this is going to the Planning and Zoning Board, and we'll get their recommendation and see this at a future date. So we now move to our next item, CDBG Annual Action Plan, and Mr. Smith will introduce this item. No action is required of our council this evening, and we'll have a public hearing. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Council. Tonight is the point in the budget cycle where we seek input on housing and community development needs for inclusion in our fiscal year 18, CDBG Annual Action Plan. Community Development Block Grants is a federal program managed by the Department of U.S. Housing and Urban Development. We have participated in this program for the past 14 years, and CDBG funds can be used for economic development, social services, public facilities, and affordable housing. CDBG has had an enormous impact in Cary. We have received to date $7.9 million. We have, and those $7.9 million have been leveraged through private investment as well and other types of grants, at a ratio of about one to eight. So for every dollar we spent in CDBG, we generated an additional $8 in other funds. We have funded 130 different projects, ranging in size from the maintenance end to down to building a handicap ramp for a senior citizen, and we have created 200 affordable housing units through CDBG. This chart shows where CDBG funds have been spent over the last 14 years. About 75% of the funds have been spent on, been spent on housing. There's four different types of housing that we've supported: rehabilitation of existing homes, new ownership opportunities, new senior rental housing, and transitional and special needs housing. The remaining 25% has been spent on such things as economic development, public services, public facilities, and urban park, and administration and planning. You may recall from past years that our normal process is to conduct this public hearing, and then in April, we present the annual action plan to you for adoption, and then the plan is due to HUD 45 days prior to the start of our fiscal year, or May 15th of each year. Because of the change in administration this year, the process has changed. We do not know yet how much we're going to receive because the budget has not been adopted on, on the federal level. So HUD has asked us to delay any funding decisions or the preparation of our annual action plan until we receive our final grant award amount. And then, once we receive that, we will have 60 days following that to finalize the annual action plan and submit it to HUD. If things drag out through the summer, then if nothing's been solved by August 16th of this year, then we are to use our last year's grant of $556,000 as an estimate and go from that standpoint. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and Mayor, you may conduct a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Answer any questions afterwards.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Now's the time for the public hearing for the fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
It's certainly my pleasure to come before you, as I've been before you through the years. First of all, I want you to know that I come from the eastern part of North Carolina.
Mr. Tyner, for the record, were you-
Oh, yes, Reverend Tyner, White Oak Foundation, White Oak Baptist Church.
Thank you.
Thank you. I come from the eastern part of North Carolina, and I was taught by parents who didn't have college education, but they told me, "Son, wherever you go, the most important thing that you could ever do is to tell people who are good to you and kind to you, thank you." I come tonight to tell this council, all of you councilmen, thank you for all that you've done and continue to do to make this community a better community. Through the years, we have, you have been gracious to us- Through the years, we have, you have been gracious to us, to help us, to do things perhaps that Cary has never done before. Right now, the White Oak Foundation is a seven-day operation that do all the things that I have listed for you on the, on the, on the handout. I will not take a lot of your time. I just want to say that if you ask anybody in Cary about us and what we're doing, they will tell you. The citizens will tell you, especially those who live in our area. Thank you again for helping us to do what we know we need to do, and that is to care for the least of these. Thank you for your help. Looking forward for your help for the years to come. Without you, we cannot feed the hungry. Without you, we cannot provide housing. Without you, we cannot provide education for our youngsters. Without you, we could not do a summer program. Without you folks, we will not be able to do the kinds of things that we need to do to uplift our community. I'm certainly hoping that you will consider us and the allocation, if Washington so see fit, to allocate funds for this, for, for next year. Thank you again, and you be blessed.
Thank you, Reverend Tyner. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Holly Richard, President and CEO with Tammy Lynn Center, and I have with me Lainne Silver, our housing guru and supporter. First of all, I wanted to just say thank you. You guys helped support a group home on Ralph Drive, and I think you were there at the ribbon cutting, and you gave us coasters, I think. Well, we provide housing for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities to give them the opportunity to live, play, work, volunteer, grow, and, and to be part of their community. And Tammy Lynn Center's been supporting people, children and adults, since 1969. We have submitted an application. We hope that, that you will consider. As you know, housing costs have continued to go up, and as a nonprofit, we can't afford to purchase. And so we're here tonight to ask for your support in purchasing one of our homes here. We have two homes now in Cary, and your support would allow us to secure a third home. That home, if it's once secured, will give us the ability to eventually be able to bring it to licensure and also make it ADA accessible, so the folks that live there can age with us and grow old there. Some of the folks that are, were in our Ralph Drive home came to live with us when they were nine and 10 years old, and they're now 50. So we've made a commitment to those families, that we will serve them and their loved ones for as long as they need us. And that takes a whole support of the community. So with your support, you would help us control this, this new home and give us an opportunity to eventually be able to renovate it and make it ADA accessible. And we would really, really appreciate your support. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. It's always good to be in your presence. I would like to echo Reverend Tyner's opening statement and just say thank you so much for all you've done. You got two handouts there. One of them is just our last year's annual report, which I'd actually probably hold off on reading right now. And then you have a, maybe five or six slide that kind of talks about what we've done with the support that we've gotten from CDBG and what we plan to do in the future. We first started receiving community development block grant funds in 2009 at Dorcas Ministries. You know, with our neighborhood, when I say our neighborhood, our community of Cary being so affluent, you're probably aware that there's this perception that there is no need in Cary, Marshville, and Western Wake County. However, we've realized over the almost 50 years that we've been here that a thriving community is a thriving community because it takes care of those who live on the fringes. So with your help and community development block grants, that's what Dorcas Ministries has been doing for almost 50 years. We've been caring for those who we might call marginal, those that are in dire need, and those that are in crisis. But because of your help, we've been able to change our model, which is why I want to kind of thank you and bring your attention to. If you notice on the first page of your handout, there says Vision of the Future from 2009. When we got our first community development block grant funds, over a period of about two years, we got funds to help buy what is now Dorcas Plaza, was formerly Cary Plaza, which was a dying shopping center, or is now a thriving shopping center. We got 250 parking spaces, and it's almost 90% full during business hours. We projected that we'd see a 58% increase in our program revenue by your investment in Dorcas Plaza. You can see in red that actual increase after the first year was 44%. In three years, it's been 128%. You also see that that vision that we had for Cary was not just for Dorcas. It was to try to create a nonprofit center. We now have a home for Habitat for Humanity Restore, Casaga, Early Learning Academy, Read and Feed, which is also youth literacy, Triangolono Club, which is a division of AA that treats alcohol recovery, Triangophagia Project, which is another health project that helps stroke victims reconnect the thought of vocal cord process. And just in January, we partnered with Advanced Community Health to open up a health clinic right in Dorcas Plaza. So that's what your initial investment in Dorcas Ministries in 2009 has reaped a return for today. If you look at your next slide, you got a bar graph, a line graph, and it shows from 2013, just a five-year increase in outreach assistance. We've gone from total cash distributions of about $345,000 to $725,000. And if you add food to that, we're giving out about a million dollars or more of assistance to those citizens that are needing this year. Remind you, again, all because of that initial investment that you saw to make fit with community development block grant funds. And if you look at the next slide, this is what I had one to talk about. This will be the one I ask you to remember. You've got a bar graph that has categories. If you notice in 2015, the addition of a green section in there that says emergency housing. Okay, so due to your funding and due to your efforts, we were able last year to stabilize 34 out of 36 families that would have been homeless or that were already homeless. And so people say, "Well, I don't think there's any homeless people in the area. I don't see them pushing the carts." That's because of the funds that you allocate and let organizations like Dorcas Ministries use to prevent. In other words, we're being proactive instead of being reactive. And what that means is those 34 families were able to stay in their neighborhoods, the kids go to the same school, and those families are now adding to our economic bottom line. The next slide that you have just shows you one about the health clinic that opened up in, on January 3rd. Maximum capacity, it will probably serve about 1,200 patients a year, or about 1,400. One good example, I needed to go to the doctor a couple of weeks ago, and I had to go to the other one because they were full. So that means that there is a need, and that need is being met. Last but not least, with CDGB funds, we've developed a master plan. We've purchased some property to erect what you might see there, a three-story building on that site, to move our services out, turn Dorcas Plaza more into a revenue generating engine, not for Dorcas, but for the community. So we say thank you, thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name's Lyle Gardner with Evergreen Construction Company, and I'm here to report on the need for affordable senior housing in Cary. We are the managers and developers of Weatherstone Spring Affordable Senior Housing Community. And we are also the developers for the proposed Ryan Spring Affordable Senior Housing Community to be located off of Ryan Road. Wanted to let you know that currently, we have a waiting list at Weatherstone Spring of over 78 individuals and couples there. And just from the advertising that the town of Cary did in connection with the rezoning that was necessary for our proposal on Ryan Road, we've had a number of inquiries already, and we haven't advertised at all. So just wanted to let you know how important that is within the community of Cary. And I know you have a small amount of funds to do a lot with, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing?
Good evening, Council. My name's Jim Middleton. I live at 100 Glen High Court here in Cary. And for the last eight years, I've served as the land acquisition manager for Habitat for Humanity of Wake County. I'm here tonight to ask for your support for us to continue to try to develop affordable housing that can be sold as ownership, not rental, and continue our program in Cary. The town's been very supportive of us in the past. As you all know, land acquisition's getting very difficult, and not only from the price, but just to find the product itself. And so I'm sure many of you have understand Habitat's program that we build alongside the homeowner, builds alongside us with $200 of sweat equity. We build with mostly volunteer groups. Cary's volunteer base of churches and individual neighbors, and some of our large corporation civic groups have been very supportive for us. So one of the things that our program offers is the opportunity for these groups to share and have team building, especially the corporations. We think having our program available helps attract those kinds of businesses to Cary, such as John Deere and MetLife have been very supportive of us. The couple of houses that we built two years ago on Evans Road, they were tremendous support from their volunteers, from the employees. The homeowner of one of those houses actually works at the Kellogg Plant right down the street. And so we serve people who are Cary residents, who would like to be homeowners in Cary but cannot afford on the conventional market. Our population is basically 30 to 60% of the average mean income. And our program works because of the very low interest rates on the mortgages. Of course, we vet the people. They have to have credit. They have to have jobs. And so they become proud homeowners. We, we need to continue this program here in Cary. I've lived in Cary 37 years, so I have a special desire to try to help continue our program in Cary. And we really need a portion of these funds to try to go forward. We do have a project that identified to do eight to nine single-family detached homes. It's in the process of zoning requests. This property's never been zoned. And so, but given the price and the improvements that have to be done with, of the frontage street, there's, there's a lot of slight improvements, not internally, but this project has frontages along, along 400-foot street. That street's got to have curb and gutter, and the utilities brought in. So that, in addition to the price of the property, it's pushed us to the very limits of what our program could afford. So we ask for your support to continue. We make an effort, I make a concerted effort every year to try to find land out here so that our program can continue in Cary. And we would hope, hope you would see fit to help us. So, any questions? Anybody has this?
Thank you, Mr. Middleton.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Justin Booth, here on behalf of the Cary Place, a board member, as well as properties committee. And first off, I'd like to thank you, and special thank you to Ken George for coming out last February, as we had our open house for our new home we were able to acquire through the Cary grant last year. So thank you to that. And going forward, you know, many of you are familiar with Cary Place. We assist about 26 families each year. And through that process, 16 weeks, we transition them. And essentially, we try to help them develop the self-confidence, confidence to maintain housing. And we do this by teaching time management and fiscal responsibility. Where we're at now, through the past couple of years, through many grants starting in 2005, we've obtained nine properties, or a mix of duplex and triplexes. But as you know, as a town, as a property owner, we're near the end of life with many facilities. So we come here not to acquire new property, but to maintain those so we can continue as a program and continue to help those in the community. So as we've able to raise funds, it costs $9,512 for 16 weeks or four months for each family in the program. That's $2,388 a month, $597 a week, or $85 a day. While maintaining these families, they live in the houses rent-free with utilities paid for, and at the end, they actually take home the furniture. So each 16 weeks, not only these housing's having a new family, they're going through, and we're putting everything into them. So to maintain the program, the costs, and everything else, we come to you today to ask for your continued support to help us grow this organization and move it forward. Appreciate your time. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Dan Sargent. I'm the executive director with Rebuilding Together of the Triangle. And we provide low-income homeowners across Wake, Orange, Durham, and Chatham Counties with home repairs, modifications for accessibility, and home performance upgrades. That's all focused on making sure that they can stay in safe, healthy homes. Our process focuses on not just the building, but the homeowner and making sure that as we improve the, the structures that we want to preserve in our community, that we're also making sure that the occupants that are in them, in many cases who've been there for decades, are going to be able to stay. We are really appreciative of the support that Cary has given us through the CBGB program in the past. And we've been able to serve eight homeowners this year in Cary, which is twice what we've served in past years. And we're looking to do more. We've been able to help folks who have been without heat this winter. We've fixed plumbing leaks, electrical hazards, removed carpet for folks in wheelchairs, done accessibility ramps, deck repairs, handrails, windows, roofing, all sorts of things that make sure that these folks can stay in warm, safe, and healthy homes. And we appreciate Cary's partnership, not just from a financial perspective, but really the, the team from Community Development has been a really great partner. John and Philip have been fantastic to work with in helping connect us to homeowners who need help, and also supporting us as we go through that process. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing. No action is required from us. Does council have any comments or questions?
Just a question for clarification. When did you say that we expect to receive a response from the Fed?
I don't know.
Or we don't know?
We don't know.
But you're going to budget what we budgeted last year?
Yeah, you did say last year's.
Right. Okay. Thank you. We now move to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is a request for waiver of the waiting period for subsequent rezoning application. Ms. Gran, and we'll present this item, and council may take action. Approval of this item takes six out of seven votes. Ms. Gran?
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request for a waiver to the one-year waiting period. There was a previous rezoning case, 16 REZ 29, for approximately 10.61 acres located off of Old White Oak Church Road. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. The current growth- The current growth framework map in the recently adopted Cary Community Plan designates this area as a suburban neighborhood. It's also a neighborhood which is west of Flat Branch and part of a special planning area, the green level special planning area. With this recently adopted plan, there was a change in the opportunity for gross density not to exceed two-point-five dwelling units per acre. Previously, the plan had been low-density residential, very low-density residential. The applicant only had the opportunity to apply for a zoning district with one-point-five dwelling units per acre. Predominant land uses are detached dwellings, lot sizes generally about a quarter acre, smaller lots available through clustering, and pockets of other housing types possibly included in the plan. The applicant applied for a rezoning of this existing property, which was zoned Residential Forty Watershed in Wake County. They withdrew the request in February of this year. It had gone to a town council public hearing. There were no speakers, there was no opposition. It became evident to the applicant that the Cary Community Plan was going to be adopted in January, so as soon as the applicant heard that the plan had been adopted, they withdrew their rezoning request. And as I stated previously, they could only ask for the one-point-five dwelling units per acre. So, now with this higher density being supported by the Cary Community Plan, the applicant did submit a formal request for the waiver of the one-year waiting period. So, Council may waive this request or this waiting period if there's substantial changes, and a three-fourths vote of Council is required to grant the waiver. Just a note for the applicant's sake and for the audience, granting this waiver does not guarantee approval of the subsequent rezoning request. It just gives the applicant the chance to come forward without having to wait a full year. So, staff recommends that Council waive the waiting period and give the applicant the opportunity to consider a wider range of residential density. The applicant is present, so if you have any questions for either me or the applicant, we're available.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. And I think that the main point to me was the last one you made, that this doesn't have anything to do with the rezoning. And when we look at the criteria, it says, has anything significantly changed? Yeah. So, it seems fair to me, and I'm just speaking for myself, of course, but I would open it up to my colleagues for questions or comments.
Just one question. When is the year up? I mean, we're halfway?
February, from the time the final action took, took place. So, the applicant withdrew the application in February twenty-seventeen. If the waiver is not granted, they would have to wait until February twenty-eighteen to reapply.
Just remind the applicant that the plan allows up to two-point-five units per acre. Doesn't automatically grant two-point-five units per acre, and previously, they were looking at one-point-five, so I'd like to see a much better project if they plan on using that much density.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver of the waiting period.
There's a motion?
Second.
And the second. Just a reminder, it takes six of us to pass this motion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, and it passes. Thank you, Ms. Grant. Move to our second discussion item, Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility Agreement. Mr. Atkins will present the item, and Council may take action.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, we're bringing you a recommendation that you approve a resolution for a new twenty-seventeen Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility Agreement, which will replace our original nineteen-eighty-eight There are three important features of this new agreement I want to bring to your attention. The first is our partnership. For nearly thirty years, we've had a close and successful partnership with Apex to construct and operate our water treatment facilities. This regional solution, built on cooperation and trust, is one way the town has met its commitment to provide high-quality, reliable, and affordable water services for current and future generations. The second feature is water supply self-reliance. These facilities in our Jordan Lake allocation have given both towns water supply self-reliance. This certainty that we can make that commitment to provide water services for current and future generations is one of the pillars that allowed Cary's growth and strength. Prior to the Cary Apex Water Treatment Facilities, Cary had to rely upon water purchase from Raleigh or on low-capacity wells to serve its citizens. The third feature is improvement. The new water facility agreement clarifies and enhances our understandings with Apex and provides an even more solid foundation to continue our partnership for the future. The Jordan Lake intake water treatment facilities and connecting pipelines began operating in nineteen ninety-three with a capacity of sixteen million gallons per day. Over the years, the facilities have been expanded, first in two thousand and two to forty million gallons per day capacity, and now, a third phase of water plant expansion is underway, increasing the plant capacity to fifty-six million gallons per day. The current project is expected to be completed by the end of the year. Our master plan anticipates a future plant expansion to sixty-four million gallons per day when it's needed. The new twenty-seventeen Water Facility Agreement keeps in place the foundation principles of the original agreement, including the ownership shares of seventy-seven percent to Cary and twenty-three percent to Apex, Cary's lead role in daily operations, and the joint advisory committee. The new agreement will enhance our partnership with Apex in some important ways. First, it addresses issues which weren't sufficiently covered in the prior agreement. Most notably, this is the use of jointly-owned property, future expansions, providing water to third parties, and managing our Jordan Lake water supply allocation and our inter-basin transfer certificate. Second, the new agreement clarifies how operations costs will be shared between Cary and Apex. Finally, the new agreement will align with the twenty-fifteen Western Wake Regional Wastewater Facility Agreement with Apex in Morrisville. Tonight, staff requests Council approve a resolution for the twenty-seventeen Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility Agreement. The town of Apex will take up the agreement at its April fourth council meeting. If approved by both towns, it would replace the current agreement on July first for a thirty-year initial term with renewals extending out to twenty-sixty-seven. That concludes staff's presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions that you've got.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Questions or comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution approving the Cary, two thousand seventeen Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility Agreement.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion.
Just a quick comment. Just want to thank staff for all your work on your long-range planning. When you see something that says this takes care of this till twenty-fourty-seven, it's like, I just want to be here in twenty-fourty-seven. It's pretty impressive when you guys do so. When you guys do long-range planning, you do long-range planning, and I, it's admirable.
Other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
We now move to our third discussion item, bid award for Kilmain Drive Elevated Water Storage Tank. Mr. Algren will present the item, and Council may take action.
Good evening, Council. Water storage tanks play a vital role in helping the town deliver high-quality water to our citizens in sufficient quantity and with ample pressure. In order to continue providing this essential service, we are building a new two-million-gallon tank on Kilmain Drive in central Cary. But first, let's take a quick look back at the history of water storage in the town. Picture here is the town's first water tank on Academy Street in downtown Cary. This tank was built in the nineteen twenties and held only a hundred thousand gallons of water, which is ten to twenty times less than the tanks today. While this tank is no longer standing, the roof of the tank can still be seen behind the subway. It's Chatham Street.
Is that really it?
That's really it.
It's historic.
Now, let's move forward and take a look at the tanks that are currently in service today. Here, we can see all of the existing elevated water tanks across town. These tanks serve three important functions: the equalized fluctuations between supply and demand, they provide reserve capacity for high-use summer months in emergencies, and they reinforce the flows necessary for firefighting. Here in green, you can see the location of the proposed Kilmain tank. And right next door is the existing Maynard tank, which will be rehabilitated once the Kilmain tank is constructed. Although related to the Kilmain tank, the Maynard tank rehab will be bid separately and is not part of the bid award we are considering tonight. That being said, the Maynard and Kilmain tanks have an important shared history, so let's take a moment to look at the Maynard tank in greater detail. Here, we can see the existing Maynard tank, which is located across the street from Cary High School. This tank was built in nineteen sixty-six and is the oldest standing water tank in town. Each year, the town has the year of the graduating class painted on the tank, however, this was not always the case. Originally, high school students would climb the tank and paint the graduating year themselves. Eventually, in the early nineties, the town took over painting details. As you can see, there's a lot of community attachments surrounding the tank, and Cary's citizens, eager to preserve this important landmark, approached the town in order to find a way to save the Maynard tank. The town looked at many alternatives to address the aging Maynard tank and presented the results in a staff report to Council in twenty-fourteen. Council approved the staff report recommendation that the town build a new two-million-gallon tank on Kilmain Drive, as well as maintain and rehabilitate the existing Maynard tank. So, what will the new Kilmain tank look like? As far as color, staff recommends the tank is painted Hidden Lake Blue to match the other tanks in town. But what about the style of the tank itself? As you can see, the town is already home to a variety of tank styles. We have fluted tanks, like the Carpenter tank in Highway fifty-five. We have a Spheroid tank near Town Hall and Field Street, and we have multi-leg tanks, like the one on Maynard Road. That brings us to an innovative tank style that we don't currently have in town, the composite tank. A composite tank is a steel bowl at the top, but the column is made of concrete. This is different from the other tanks in town, which are made entirely of steel. Composite tanks can be found all across North Carolina and have been embraced by many local communities, including Durham and Raleigh. So, what is so important about a concrete column versus steel? One major advantage is the total painted surface for the composite tank. This graphic shows the painted surface in blue for each style of tank. As you can see, the painted surface is significantly less for a composite tank than for the other tank styles, minimizing this area that requires periodic painting and has long-term financial benefits. Tanks are typically repainted every fifteen to twenty years, and the present worth of savings for the next paint cycle alone is estimated to be around two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Which brings us to the bids for the composite tank. Bids for this project were collected on February third. However, due to a bid irregularity, the project was re-advertised and bids were again reopened on March eighth from Caldwell, CBNI, and Landmark. Bid alternates were gathered for both fluted steel and composite-style tanks, as well as paint coatings from Sherwin-Williams, Carboline, and Tenebec. This bid matrix shows the prices for each of these various combinations. Landmark does not manufacture a fluted steel tank, so the matrix does not show pricing for that option. As you can see, the lowest bid for a fluted steel tank is from CBNI with a Sherwin-Williams paint coating system. However, the overall lowest bid across all combinations is for a composite tank with a Sherwin-Williams paint coating system from CBNI. Staff has reviewed the bids and recommends this is the most cost-effective option, providing the best balance of tank material and performance, which is why staff recommends that Council reject all bids from February third and, based on bids received March eighth, award the bid in the amount of four million eight-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred dollars to CBNI for the construction of a two-million-gallon composite elevated water storage tank with a Sherwin-Williams paint coating system. And with that, I welcome any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a comment. The one thing I've learned on councils, the only thing more objectionable than putting up a new tank?
Is taking one down.
Is taking one down.
Had someone cry in my arms about that.
I know. Who would've guessed?
I know.
Great work, staff report. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you. You actually made it very interesting.
Yeah.
I did not expect that.
Tremendous report.
So, excellent work. I would like to make a motion that we accept staff recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to make a, just a note for everyone so that we're not caught off guard. This will be the first time that we'll have, should this motion go through, a tank that is, has two colors. The bottom will be concrete, right, concrete, and the top will be blue. It'll be different than every other tank around. I just, one thing I've learned on council is don't surprise people, right? And it will be different. I'm okay with it, but I just want people to say, well, that doesn't look like any other tank that we had, right? That, or that we've had to date, but none of the other ones have either, so.
I would say every one other one has been pretty different, too.
Except they're always all blue, right? So, this one will have a two-tone color, which is just something that could surprise some people, and, you know, they might give us their feedback, as they always do.
Other comments?
I have a question. And I looked a little bit, and was this CBNI the one that, were they disqualified before? And there were some questions about the piping or something from the previous disqualification?
They weren't disqualified. The staff recommends that we reject all bids.
Right, right. I realize that, but there was, but there was a question before. Was this also, were they the low bidder the first time as well, that we rejected all bids?
Yeah, they were the apparent low bidder.
That's what I was trying to get, yeah.
Sorry. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Just compliment you, very informative presentation. I appreciate it. I tell people I learn something new every day on this job, and I just did. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Council.
We now move to our last discussion item, which is a stadium naming rights agreement at Wake Med Soccer Park. Mr. McGrany will present the item, and Council may take action. Mr. McGrany.
Good evening, Council. So, this request is for the naming rights for the soccer stadium at Wake Med Soccer Park, and we'll be seeking Council's approval for the naming of the stadium at Wake Med Soccer Park in accordance with the terms of the sponsorship agreement between the North Carolina Women's Football Club and Salin Packing Company. Back in December of two thousand and sixteen, Steve Malick, owner of the Carolina Football Club, reached agreement to purchase The Flash, which is a women's professional soccer team located in western New York. And this is a photo of The Flash actually celebrating the championship that they won in the National Women's Soccer League. So, the good news is we've got a very good soccer team coming to Wake Med Soccer Park. As part of the Flash acquisition, Steve Malick was able to negotiate naming rights for the stadium at Wake Med Soccer Park with the Salin Packing Company. And I would say that the, this agreement that they reached was actually an integral part of the acquisition. There was a gap between what he was willing to pay and what they felt the value of the team was, and the naming rights actually closed that gap. And the Salins, I might just say, are a prominent family from Buffalo, New York, and have owned and managed Me Company since eighteen sixty-nine. As part of the town's lease with the North Carolina Football Club that was approved by Council back in May of two thousand and sixteen, the Carolina Football Club was charged with finding a corporate sponsor for the naming rights for the stadium. As an incentive to CFC, as we call them, the town agreed to a seventy-five-twenty-five split to any deal that they could develop. And we did this because when they were the Railhawks prior to becoming CFC, over a two-to-three year period, we had been unable to find any corporate sponsor. And so, when we negotiated the lease last year, that was one of the things we had talked to them about in terms of giving them the seventy-five-twenty-five split. So, the new name of the stadium will be Salin Stadium or Salin Stadium at Wake Med Soccer Park, again, based on the terms of the sponsorship agreement. And actually, this image you see before you is the actual logo that will be placed on the scoreboards on both the south and the north end. And here is the image of what it looks like. This is, this is viewing the scoreboard at the northern end, and so, the logo will be placed on top of the scoreboard. So, under the proposed sponsorship, Salin and the North Carolina Women's Football Club, the new operator, The Courage, will enter into a sponsorship agreement that provides a third-party enforcement rights to the town. And per the agreement, Salin will pay the North Carolina Women's Football Club four-hundred-thousand over five years for the stadium naming rights, and the town is entitled to twenty-five percent of this amount, or one-hundred thousand. So, I just want to say this, that we are excited about the significance of this deal since it represents the first opportunity to obtain revenue for the soccer stadium in the amount of hundred thousand over the next five years. And while the soccer- And while the soccer park has secured naming rights, since the town took over management in 2004, this is the first time that we've been able to secure a value for the stadium in and of itself. Now, beyond the issue of the naming rights, while we, while the town has established itself on the regional and national stage through hosting of the ACC and the NCAA championships over the past thirteen years, Mr. Malick has increased the recognition of Cary through the following efforts. He's purchased and rebranded a men's professional team to become a full-service professional soccer club in, as, and the North Carolina Football Club. As a repeat, he's also acquired a women's professional team, the North Carolina Courage, that plays in the highest women's professional soccer league. And The Courage in the Wake Med Stadium will be on national television on the Lifetime Channel this coming season. In fact, I believe five of the games during the summer, starting in June, will be televised on Lifetime, which means that the town of Cary, Wake Med Soccer Park, will receive national attention this coming summer. Mr. Malick has orchestrated a merger of two large youth soccer clubs in the area into the largest youth-to-pro organization in the United States and branded them under the NCFC Youth banner. And these two clubs that are directly ingrained in Cary with thousands of Cary youth players in field partnerships. Mr. Malick was also recently chosen to serve in the U.S. Soccer Federation Award, which is the highest soccer organization in the United States. And he is the first from this region to do so. And all of this furthers the town goal collectively of waking, of making Wake Med Soccer Park one of the elite soccer facilities in the United States. So with that, our recommendation, and I'll read this, because it's a little more involved, but we would request that council approve the assignment by the Carolina Football Club its naming rights opportunity to the North Carolina Women's Football Club and approve the naming of the stadium at Wake Med Soccer Park Salem Stadium, or Salem Stadium at Wake Med Soccer Park, substantially in accordance with the terms of the sponsorship agreement between the North Carolina Women's Football Club and Salem Packing Company. Attached to the staff report, including particular schedules 1 and 4, that's a mouthful, but we would seek your approval of that long recommendation. And I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McGrany. Questions, comments, a motion?
I make a motion that the council approve the assignment by CFC of its naming rights. Shall I read all this?
You can say staff recommendation.
Okay. As you read it.
Motion approves staff recommendation. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
So the byline is, our meat is two years older than Cary.
Yeah.
Right? Well...
Eighteen sixty-seven.
Okay. I think of it that way.
Yeah, I mean, it's really old. It's aged, it's aged beef, Jack.
All right. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGrany. We'll now move into closed session. Ms. Bush?
Oh, wow. Pursuant to GS 143318, 11A3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and, among other things, council expects to receive advice concerning the following lawsuits, the City of Fayetteville Public Works Commission of the City of Fayetteville versus the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission at all, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 14331810E.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.